Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the role, please.
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Present.
Merringa.
Present.
Nordhook.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truce.
Here.
Vanderwaal.
Here.
And Mayor Mas.
Before we move on, I'd like to make a recommendation to the council that Mayor Mas is traveling and he'd like to excuse from the meeting. Is there a motion to excuse the mayor from tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Motion and support. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, please say no. All right, for the invocation tonight, we have Pastor Melanie Kilgore from First Reformed Church. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation and we will follow that with a pledge of allegiance.
Hello, everyone. Always a pleasure to be among you and thank you for all of your roles and your leadership in this community. If you're comfortable, I encourage you to join me in prayer. Gracious God, we thank you for this evening that you have brought us together. And for the many people who are in this room who hold such wonderful roles, whether that's citizens or our police force and our leaders. And Lord, we ask that your wisdom would be in this, would be present in this room, that you would give us the ability to discern, to move with grace in our decision-making, there'd be a sense of unity and peace. And we also ask for that same things to be in our community. Where there is a lack of peace, of restlessness, Lord, we ask for your peace to be present. For the disunity that we find among us, would your unity bind us together and hold us secure? So your presence be here and may your blessing be upon us. We put this all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Kilgore. Always a pleasure when you're here, so stay as long as you'd like. Thank you. Before we approve the agenda, I had a note to pull a certain item off of the consent agenda and pull it into the city manager's report, and that is regarding the HVAC replacement. So if we're comfortable with pulling the HVAC replacement into the city manager's report under item three, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Support.
Motion and support. Marcy, let's call the role on that one.
Councilmember Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwaal.
Yes. You've got a chance to look over the minutes from September 23. Seems like a long time ago. And if there's anything that you noticed should be corrected or added, speak up now. Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from September 23 regular meeting.
So moved. Support.
Motion and support. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? All right, presentation of bills. Griffin, pretty hefty amount, but always good things when there's money happening in the city. So give us a rundown if you have, or give us a preview of what's to come.
Sure, yeah, thank you. There is a decent number of bills for these last few weeks. Again, some exciting things happening in the city in regard to the pre-written checks in the amount of almost $62,000. Those are primarily the standard utility cellphone credit card bills. There were a couple on there from Dell, which are equipment leases, as well as one for a software subscription. Really, nothing particular of note tends to be kind of the standard pre-written checks that we have. When you move to the regular checks in the amount of $734,670, there are a few more that I'll highlight. First, there is a bill in the amount of $222,000 to Georgetown Construction. This is in regard to the ongoing 36th Street Water Main project that I know many of you have been dealing with for the last several weeks. I am really excited to share that with the good weather we've had. That project is on schedule and making really steady progress. There were bills that totaled the amount of $67,565 to the Grand Valley Metro Council. This was a combination of a number of invoices from them, including various annual dues, our annual GIS subscription for Regis, as well as an invoice in the amount of $8,571.42 for the EMS Consortium study, the share that was specifically brought to you all maybe a month or so ago now to participate in that study with other metro six entities. We had an invoice in the amount of almost $8,000 to the Grand Valley State, or to Grand Valley State University. Just want to share that tuition for our police recruit that is doing well there. So it's exciting to highlight that that's something that we have ongoing. We have Great Lakes paving in the amount of $85,690. This was for paving that took place at both the water tank and the Heritage Park parking lot. And then lastly, would just like to point out one of two annual invoices to Kent County. This one's in the amount of $92,000, or excuse me, $93,000 for police dispatch and lean maintenance services. Few other exciting ones in there that we can talk about more if you all are interested, but I'll leave it there for now. Really, nothing that out of the ordinary in this month's bills.
Thank you, Griffin. Any questions for Griffin or any department heads? Yeah, Randy?
Just a quick question on Zero Waste USA Inc., the last one on the list. Who is that? What did they do for us? $990, $99.90. Which is unique in my.
It's a great question. Yeah, oh, Charlie, I'm sorry.
That is for doggy poop bags and bikes.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. That would've taken me much longer to find.
It's just kind of an odd number, 10 cents under $1,000, so, thank you.
You know, Charlie, out of curiosity, how many, maybe you don't know this, but maybe you do, how many spots do we have those bags available in our city?
I would say at least a dozen along the trailways and in the parks. And people really do use them.
I agree with you. Thanks. Josh, anything?
Yeah?
Good question here. Charlie knows this one too. Under Parks and Rec, the Brown Cemetery Monument from Black Monument, $12.95, is that for the pickleball courts?
That was the pickleball one. The park is closed for the recognition and so.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else?
If I can point out just one more, and the only reason I'll point it out is because we're actually going to discuss it a little bit more in a minute when we get to the franchise agreement. But we do have one of our quarterly payments to WCE TV in the amount of $17,500. Just, I'm going to point that out because we're actually going to just discuss that just a little bit more later in the agenda, so just to point that one out.
That's good. There's no other questions for Griffin or any department heads? Looking for a motion to approve the presentation of the bills in the amount of $796,458.85.
So moved. Support.
Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwaal.
Yes. All right, we have a presentation tonight, introduction of Deputy Police Chief Darren Rietman. Chief, if you're here for that, that's exciting news.
Yes, it is. As you know, Deputy Chief Feldman retired just after July 2nd, and it's been a long process to find a replacement. We posted both internally and externally. I'd like to thank Manager Graham, Mayor Proton Vanderwaal, and Councilmember Steenstra for assisting us in the selection process. It was both done internally and externally. And we selected Deputy Chief Darren Rietman. Darren is a 21-year veteran of our agency, recently completed his bachelor's degree, and he has served in many different capacities for us. And we are happy to have him in this position, and you folks will be getting to know him a little better, starting with right now.
Wish I could get that introduction.
As he said, Darren Rietman, I've been with the city for 21 years, serving in various capacities. I just want to keep this real brief and say, I'm completely humbled and honored by giving this opportunity to work more with all of you and seeing what we can do to be better tomorrow than we are today. And I know we work with citizens and community engagement products, which are processed and stuff like that, which is very important to me. So I will for sure be seeing you all more. So thank you for this opportunity.
Praise your worship.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Darren. Appreciate your interest and dedication to the city. Appreciate it. All right, it's time for public comment. Do you have anything to address the city council? Come up to the podium, give us your name, your address, tell us what you're thinking about, and we'll go from there. Kyla, welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to let you know that Starbucks, the foundation, actually gave the Granville Community Tree Project a grant of $2,000. And we were able to plant 10 trees this weekend, some of them to replace the trees that were taken out at Heritage Park. And it was quite a pleasure, Sunday morning, I grabbed breakfast and went out and was just admiring the trees that we planted. And as I was sitting there eating my breakfast, it was pretty interesting to see how many people walked up to see what kind of trees we planted. And we're really, really happy to see some trees go back in because the renovations, the older trees needed to come down. And it was nice to be able to use the grant that we received to be able to serve the city by planting new trees in there. And I want to thank Haley Gould, who was our previous president. She worked at Starbucks, and she actually applied for the grant and got it for us. We had a lot of great volunteers come out. Best of all, we got some pretty large trees that we wouldn't have been able to handle. And Charlie and his team actually came behind us and picked up the trees, they dug the holes for us, and they actually sat some of the bigger trees so that we didn't injure any volunteers, and we were able to put larger trees in that way. So it was a great weekend.
Thank you, Kyla. I know I saw some photos on Facebook, looked like a nice brisk fall morning to do that.
Yeah, that was beautiful.
Yeah, thanks to DPW for helping out, as always. Anybody else? No? All right. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Griffin, do you want to walk us through each one of these briefly?
I'm happy to.
Sure.
We'll go ahead and start with Comcast franchise agreement. So for those of you who know or those of you who don't know, there are two cable television franchise holders in the city of Granville, Comcast and AT&amp;T. The existing franchise agreement with Comcast was approved 10 years ago in 2014 for a 10-year term, so it is getting ready to expire. The city of Granville collects about $120,000 annually in franchise fees from this agreement with Comcast. And the reason for pointing out the invoice to WCE TV a little bit ago was that is the primarily, the primary use of those funds is our quarterly contributions to WCE TV who record these meetings, put them online, and make them available for the public. The rest is retained in the general fund as allowed by law. And what we have before you all this evening is a renewed franchise agreement with Comcast. It would be for another 10-year term, really in the same form and with the same details as 10 years ago. That is a 5% franchise fee and a 1% peg fee. And it's just worth noting that there's not a whole lot we get to do with these anymore. The format of these agreements is uniform as required by law. The city attorney and his office were involved in the negotiating of this deal, so I'm sure he's happy to answer any questions there may be. But otherwise, I will leave it there, and I'm also happy to answer any questions there may be on this.
Great, thank you. Dave, anything to add on that?
No, I'll just note that Act 480, which is the relevant statute, as city manager said, takes away really the ability of municipalities to have too much input into these agreements. The legislature and all of its wisdom saw fit to stipulate the form of agreement as well as the amounts that you can charge. And so there's very limited ability to change very much here. There's a 5% franchise fee, which is the maximum, and we have a 1% peg fee. The peg again goes to the, effectively can only be used for certain things, including local access television. And so my understanding is that the 1% is what has been used historically, and there really hasn't been need for any more than that for that purpose. So no real comments on this, other than it's consistent with what you'd expect to see. And frankly, if it doesn't get approved, the law says that if it's submitted and it's complete, it's deemed approved 30 days after it's submitted. So it will be deemed approved ultimately if we don't take action on it anyway.
No matter what.
Yeah, so no, no material, no material concerns.
On that point, if I can make just one other comment, it's a little to the side of whether or not you all ultimately approve the agreement or not. But it is worth noting that the revenue from these franchise fees has been decreasing in the last few years. As you all can imagine, there's less people subscribing to traditional cable packages. So I do know our finance department has been accounting for that and has slowly been budgeting down the amount we bring in, consistent with the trends that we're seeing. On that note, it is kind of interesting that the state legislator has started talking about whether or not it's equitable to have these franchise fees for groups like AT&amp;T and Comcast and not for some of the new streaming platforms. So I definitely am not in a position to be able to predict what comes of that, but I do know that's a topic that the state legislator has been exploring for a couple of years now.
I'm sure anywhere they can get some, their hands on money, it's, they're going to go for it, so. Tim, anything to add? I know you're on WCE TV board, anything you want to add to this?
No, just that WCE TV does more than just record our meetings here. It's available, it's working very closely with Granville High School, Hudsonville High School to encourage student-produced programs. We're getting into HD TV and streaming, and we have a long-range plan that will rename the station and hopefully we'll get some additional funding.
Great. Any other questions for Josh?
I was just going to say, because so Comcast and AT&amp;T, this is really just specific to the cable piece of it, not the internet piece of it, right?
Correct.
Because it's a separate, like we did with Metro, not a few weeks ago, that's, you know, because they both have internet services as well through fiber and so forth, but this is just specific to the cable franchise fees.
Anybody else? Marcy, this resolution is 3355, correct?
Correct.
All right. So is there a motion to enter into an agreement with the Comcast franchise agreement for 10 years, resolution number 3355?
So moved. Support.
Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwaal.
Yes. Second item under the resolutions is a new off-premise tasting room permit, and I think we have some gentlemen here, but Griffin, if you want to open it up?
Sure, I'm happy to. So Adesanya Mead and Microbrewery is requesting local government approval to start serving spirits at their location on 28th Street. As many of you are likely aware, this is an existing business that has an existing liquor license, but they are looking to expand their offerings. And according to state law, to be able to do that, they need to reapply and get some things addressed with their liquor license. So as with any liquor license, it first comes to the local governing body for recommendation to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. So the materials we received from them are in your packet, but as you alluded to, the applicant is in attendance, and I'm sure would be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Sure. Anything you guys would like to add to that?
Well, I mean, the permit that we're looking to do is simply to offer the spirit onsite. As goofy as it sounds, offsite, I don't know why the state words it that way, I'm still kind of trying to wrap my head around that too, but our attorneys that are like, yeah, you know, you guys, when you talk to the city, it's going to sound weird, but when you produce the spirit, it's going to be consumed onsite even though it's worded, an offsite permit. What we're looking to do is simply just add to what we're already kind of doing.
That's great. Yeah, thank you for being vested partners in Granville. Oh, absolutely. Love it here. Appreciate you guys being here. Any questions for the applicant or for Griffin on this? No? If not, is there a motion to, I'm guessing, resolution 3356 to approve new off, sorry, keep moving through the process of new off-premises tasting room permit for the resident brewer 301228 Street?
So moved. Support.
Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Truce.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwaal.
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen. Looking forward to it. And moving down the consent agenda, we do have a few items on there, minus the item 4A, obviously we'd move that to the city manager's report, but in your packet you have the reports from the police from September, treasurer's August report, minutes from Parks and Rec from August, and the authorization for the ballot for the MML liability property pool and board of directors. And I'm told we should be naming those individuals in the motion, which it's in your packet here, and we can review that in just a second here. And then also then adding in 4B, the motor pool vehicle disposals. We have nine of those going to auction, is that correct? Yeah. So any questions before we approve the consent agenda for department heads or for Griffin? No, and I guess let's just specify, do you have the names in front of you there, Griffin? I'm sorry.
No problem, I do.
It's the city manager from Rockford, who is?
Yep, Thad Beard, T-H-A-D-B-E-A-R-D.
Okay.
And then Dan Swallow is the city manager of the city of Tecumseh.
Tecumseh.
In the southeast side.
Great.
And you do, just so you all get full information, you all do have the option to write in a candidate if you're so inclined. Traditionally, how the MML liability and property pool works is they'll essentially make some recommendations. It would be quite practically difficult to get someone elected by write-in, but I just want to make sure you all are aware, you do technically have that ability.
Anybody itching to write their own name in?
I just got appointed to that board.
Oh, did you?
From the league, but I don't know why I don't have to be voted on by the different municipalities, so.
That's a good question.
Replacing a vacancy or something.
Maybe next time.
And not meeting yet.
Any other questions regarding the rest of the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor Proton, if we could do this one in the best interest also, because we do have a sale on here.
Oh, sure.
So, and obviously 13.1 of the charters covers purchases and sales.
Okay.
So we should probably do this one in the best.
Sounds good.
Since it's not a sealed bid process if we do an auction.
Sounds good, appreciate that. So we're looking for approval of the consent agenda in the best interest of the city, also naming Thad Beard and Dan Swallow to the MML Property Pool Board of Directors.
Support.
Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwaal.
Yes. City manager's report. Now we have three items on there. Griffin, you can take your stab at number one when you're ready.
Sure, no problem. Let's go ahead and start first with use of opioid settlement funds for an AED purchase request. So the memo in the packet details a request from the police department to purchase 10 AED units to be placed in the market patrol vehicles used by the police department. Really, the reason we are discussing this more than a traditional purchase is, first, it is not a budgeted expense, but would like to highlight that the funds to purchase this, the purchase of these units would be covered with some special funding from the National Opioid Settlement. So because of that, also wanted to take a moment just to give you all a little bit of background of the National Opioid Settlement and the funding we're expecting to receive. So as many of you may recall, over the past handful of years now, there was quite an opioid challenge that has ravaged many communities really throughout the country, many of which, including the city of Granville, at one point in time opted into, all I can really describe it as, is a kind of a national class action lawsuit against various companies involved in supplying and producing various opioids. Ultimately, that worked through the process, and the state of Michigan was slated to receive near, nearly $800 million from this National Opioid Settlement over the next 18 years. And 50% of that settlement amount in the state of Michigan is going to be distributed directly to county, cities, and township governments. What does that mean for the city of Granville? Well, best of our knowledge and based on the predictions we've received from the state of Michigan, the city of Granville is predicted to receive $170,000 over that 18 years. The challenge with that, particularly for planning purposes, is there is not a real good timeline of how much we're going to receive and when over that 18-year period of time. So what we know right now is, to date, we have received $45,000, so there is funding available to fully cover this request for equipment. And it's worth noting that one of the reasons we're bringing this request is because it's an eligible expense per the National Opioid Settlement guidelines. Chief Englem provided a lot of helpful information with his purchase request, but as you'll see, there are quite a few strings tied to what we can use this funding for. The way I've been describing it as succinctly as possible is, really, it has to be directly tied to the treatment, the response or education revolving around people challenged with opioid addiction. So really, what we have before you all this evening is primarily the request to purchase these 10 AED units with opioid settlement money we've received to date. And then also, if you all are willing, I'd like to have just a little bit of a discussion with what you all may want to use that funding for moving forward. We're very comfortable continuing to kind of move forward with the status quo, which is to accept it as we receive it, and then kind of here and there make these eligible expense-type purchase requests. Really, the only other option I've seen for municipalities of our size is to create a grant program where you essentially serve as a pass-through for this opioid dollars, and you would accept requests or applications from area nonprofits or other entities you all determine appropriate. And you could essentially contract for service for them to support any opioid treatment, counseling, education, or other assistance that we don't directly provide as a city. The only reason I bring that up right now is because if that's something you all are interested in, our team could do a little bit more work to refine that, and we could talk more about it moving forward. But if it's something you all aren't interested in and would prefer just to stick with kind of the traditional, let's bring in the money and use it for miscellaneous purchases as we move forward, we won't spend our time on that, and we'll just kind of keep moving forward as is.
Thank you for that background. And Chief, thank you too for that chart, too, really highlighted items that could or couldn't be used for. Anything you want to add to this?
When we first got into it, we didn't know how much funding we would end up receiving. At that point, we were the only law proponent in Kent County that was currently carrying Narcan. Reason why we hadn't was the response times of our fire department. It was a safety issue. We had a chance to purchase that, ended up passing to the city. We decided to accept the funds and utilize that going forward. We were able to receive the Narcan for free, so then we only had to spend like $1,000 for the proper pouches and stuff to carry it. Like Manager Graham said, there are a lot of limitations to this. One of the items I'm still attempting to get approval for is a mobile fingerprint scanner because we've had multiple patients where we've had overdose patients without any identification, and we don't know who they are, when we get them to the hospital, they can't pull appropriate medical records. So that is one product that we are attempting to get approval for. And another one that we are looking at is called the True Narcan Machine, and that allows us to identify substances unseen, so we can have a better idea of what type of narcotic that individuals overdose down. So there are logical equipment purchases that we can work towards, but like the manager said, if you wanted to go in the ground, you know, that would be the most. said, if you wanted to go in the ground route, you know, that would be the most common of these guidelines as well.
Well, council, any thoughts on, before entering into this purchase request, thoughts on use of this, these funds in the future for potentially seventeen and a half more years?
We've already got a good chunk of it.
That's true.
I guess I don't, it's not a huge MO. I mean, it's helpful to be able to purchase some equipment and things like that, but I don't think it makes sense to try to run a grant program, that administrative burden to do that, this doesn't seem like that's a real beneficial or efficient way to address the funds. I think these are good suggestions, the things that the chief has talked about make a lot of sense as far as first responders and medical response, and having AEDs available is really important.
Are these a replacement for AEDs that we already had in vehicles, or this is a new piece of equipment that we'd be adding?
This would be new, and I did talk with chief May.
Yeah.
You know, it's not a competition, we do not want to become an MFR agency. There have been times where our fire departments have been out and, you know, derailing a medical first response unit in from Wyoming or Walker, and that greatly reduces response time. All of our officers are currently trained and can utilize AEDs. It's just based on the response time of our fire department. We haven't looked at them before due to the cost with being a approved expense through these funds. We thought it would not only serve us the targeted population for the opioid impacted population, but it would also increase our service delivery to our citizens.
Good question. You guys have collaborated on this?
Yeah. The fire department provides their first AED and CPR training, so. You can't go down these sides of the community.
No.
AEDs or CPR trained people, so we're hundred percent.
And do you have those AD, ADD machines as well? Just making sure you're, we're on the same page. Questions about?
I concur with what Josh said and look forward, look into the future with more equipment.
Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, are school districts eligible for this funding as well, or just all the law enforcement and city governments?
My understanding is, school districts are not receiving direct allocations of funding. They would be eligible for grants through a local unit. Like, for example, if they had an equipment thing or something they needed, that could be considered a use with this funding, but they're not receiving a direct allocation, is my understanding.
Okay. I had another question, I guess. So the quantity that, the number that we're looking for here is ten of these?
Yes.
Is that, so that's to outfit every vehicle, then?
Yeah, that'll put one each one of our market vehicles.
Okay. I guess the only thing I'm wondering is, do we need one in every vehicle, or would it be in something that, because we don't have ten vehicles on the road at the same time?
That's true, but if you don't have one in each vehicle the time you need it, it's not going to be.
Right. Okay. And what's, what's the lifespan of these? Do you have an idea?
At least a decade.
Ten years? Okay.
And if the technology gets antiquated before the machine stops working.
Right. Yeah. I would just hate to purchase additional equipment that we don't end up using, you know, but it makes sense to have it in the vehicle, so it's available at the ready, but so it's going to, you know, expire before it ends up being used or.
Right.
Okay. Thanks.
Good questions. Well, does Amber feel strongly about using the opioid settlement funds for AED purchase request from the police department?
I motion that we do so. Second.
Great. Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Trust.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Vanderwijk.
Yes.
All right. Item number two, get out your calendars. Those are, those are requests, right? Bring your calendar. So Griffin, take us away on strategic planning.
Yes, please. For the sake of not being long-winded, I'll try to keep it pretty short, but as I settle into my role as the city manager, something I've been putting some thought into is trying to schedule time with the city council to facilitate a strategic planning session for our organization moving forward. My understanding is this has been done in the past in various forms, both as kind of standalone retreats, as well as, you know, periodic conversations on specific topics. My goal's not to take away from having specific conversations, strategic conversations about specific topics, but instead to find a time in early to mid-January where we can all do a, really a kickoff to the upcoming budget process and use that time to set goals and priorities that our team will use throughout that budget process and obviously into the future. So my suggestion is to do this as a standalone meeting. I have facilitated a process like this in the past and actually have an offer from Kent County Administrator Al Vanderberg to help us with this process. What we've done in the past is a little bit of a commitment. It's normally about a three and a half to a four hour session. I will tell you in my experience that time flies. It's a relatively fast-paced and engaging session, but nevertheless, I recognize that many of you have busy schedules, many of you work full-time jobs during the day, so want to start talking about trying to find a time or a couple options now with the goal of having something in place by early to mid-January. So I'm happy to kind of take suggestions for the sake of trying to narrow it down a little bit. A couple options that I will throw out to the group is if the goal is to look at Monday evenings and that being a time that tends to work for most people, that would make January sixth or January twentieth, recognizing that is MLK Day, so I don't know if that throws a wrench into anyone's plans, but both of those evenings look open. We likely want to start about five o'clock or as soon as people can get here after work just because of the length. I'll also throw out the dates of the tenth of January or the seventeenth of January. Both of those are Fridays, and theoretically, you know, I'd be available at any time, but I'll kind of throw it out to you all to see if you all are interested or what times may work.
Well, I guess let's open up the conversation. One, first of all, I love the idea of strategic planning. We probably all do it in a version of any business or education setting that we've been a part of. Having Al here too, as I think you mentioned him as a mentor as well, might be a nice experience. Anybody feel strongly about not doing this and doing a different version of this, or maybe you've thought about a different way to attack strategic planning? I know we've done quarterly, specific items with Ken in the past. Any thoughts?
Yeah, I'll just say I really like the idea as well. I personally would request, if it works for everyone, that we do January sixth instead of the twentieth, just because the historical commission meetings are always the third Monday of the month, and I feel like they are often taken away, and I have to tell the historical commission, I'm really sorry, I can't be at that meeting because we have a council matter, so if we could try to avoid the third Monday for once, I would appreciate that.
I have a conflict with the third Monday too, so the sixth would be good for me. Are we looking at one date, Griffin?
Preferably having like maybe a primary and a backup, just because I'll have to confirm with, with Al's schedule, but what I would say is if we can get this group to confirm a date, whether or not we can ultimately get Al there, I think we can, we can facilitate it from, from there, recognizing the everyone's busy schedule.
You think, you're thinking like an evening for a few hours?
Yes. So if we look at the Monday, January sixth, yeah, I would, I would think that evening.
Like starting at six or something?
Yeah, or as early as we could, knowing people's schedules.
Including department heads as well?
Yes. So that's a great question. Actually, the mayor Pro Tem brought that up to me earlier as well. So I will be hosting a leadership retreat for the management team actually earlier in the month of January. We'll be doing a little bit of our own kind of internal team building and prep with the idea that they would be able to help answer any questions or provide any information, but the strategic planning session with the city council, they would be available, but it would be primarily for the city council.
So you'd be doing this before January sixth?
I have that scheduled for January third.
Okay. There's that much.
That was also a difficult date to schedule, but we, we made it work.
Yeah, I think obviously it's helpful to have their input, you know, just like we do for budget, you know, there's, it's a team effort, everything that we do, so it's good to have their input and their information as well, but.
Absolutely.
I like doing the session. We've done it a couple of different ways over the years, but I think it would be helpful if we're going to have a chunk of time to meet and talk through some things that maybe we have some, something to kind of prep and be beforehand, or like a survey or something where we can start kind of generating some ideas, brainstorming some things to come and have some meaningful discussion about, rather than trying to do all the brainstorming at the session. I think we've done that before where there's been a list maybe sent out of things that have come up over the last couple of years that we've been able to kind of think about and sort of prioritize or kind of help guide our discussion. I think that's helpful personally.
Anybody else, or anybody else feel strongly about one date or another? Sounds like the sixth seems to be a popular time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have the mayor's schedule obviously in front of me, but, you know, if we could pencil maybe the sixth in as our top choice, excuse me, Val, I don't know that the twentieth is even our backup choice with two people that have already said that that's a bad idea. I'm out for the seventeenth. The tenth could work for me as a backup date, but Fridays are kind of challenging.
I can do the tenth.
So, yeah, sooner or earlier in January, the better, because later it gets into the year, the more some of us think about just like going somewhere warmer, so let's get it over with.
I know, Griffin, you had thrown out five, Josh, you had thrown out six P M. I mean, if we start at five thirty, is that enough time? Do you think that we're not sitting here too late in the evening? Is five thirty okay to get here by then?
Five thirty is about as early.
I don't think Josh can get there.
About as early as I can.
Can you get there by five, Josh?
Four thirty. I don't think I can get there that early.
Five thirty?
I mean, three?
Five thirty-six, probably.
Okay.
Well, let me.
I don't think you do five. I have no idea what I'm doing in January, to be honest, at this point, it's too early.
Let me see what I can do and we.
Who's going to work practice or?
I understand that.
Okay.
We can work on some of those details as we go. Does, does the tenth work for everyone else? I know that becomes more of a challenge for people working.
That's the Friday?
Yeah, that would be a Friday.
Be the same deal for the evening?
Evening, okay.
Eight A M?
I like eight A M.
I'd figure that.
So you could probably do it earlier on Friday. I don't see how schools, noon on Fridays, right?
I mean, could we pencil in like an earlier time on that Friday as a backup?
Time?
I mean, starting at five thirty on Friday night, it seems like a terrible idea.
Yeah. Right.
Everyone's, everyone's.
You probably do it earlier on Friday.
Okay. Well, let me, let, let me plan on moving forward. Again, let me start, I appreciate your willingness to do it. I, I, as a new manager, it's definitely helpful to have that direction to kind of keep things rolling, but let me reach out and see about the sixth as our first option, the tenth as our second option, and if we can get a date locked in, we'll start working through times and locations and stuff like that from there, but this was very helpful. I appreciate that.
Great. Perfect. Anything else you need to wrap up with that, or we?
Not, not at this time. Let me put some thought, Josh, into a survey and what that would look like, but I think that could be a good idea too, particularly we can see what comes out of the leadership retreat with the management team and what, how that may be able to inform something.
Or even just to go back over the last couple of years, I think previously Ken had kind of kept a running list of things that had come up in different discussions, but.
Okay.
I'm sure between the department heads and, you know, looking back over Knowles and stuff, we probably could come up with a list. I just found that helpful to have something to kind of reflect back on and say, here's things that have come up that we said we wanted to have some more discussion about.
Perfect.
Sure. If we're in a shop for three to four hours, better to be prepared.
Yep.
Right. We'll have a new parking rec master plan to be looking at, you know, the city's master plan that's recently been updated.
Great.
There's lots of good stuff in there.
All right. Moving on, the last item in the city manager's report is the item that we pulled out of the consent agenda, the HVAC replacement. Griffin, do you want to just kind of walk us through where we're going, and Charlie's here to answer questions and go from there?
Sure, I'm happy to. So we have a request to purchase some HVAC equipment to provide some maintenance in a variety of different facilities that the city owns and operates. My understanding is we got pricing from Quality Air, which is a company that the city contracts with and has a long-term history, but I am going to go ahead and defer to Charlie as there were a few questions from some members of council about the reasoning behind the sole source designation as opposed to competitively bidding the project. So Charlie, if you don't mind.
Last year, we put all the HVAC in many of the city buildings also. We have, the city has been with Quality Air for twenty-five plus years. They maintain, they service all our stuff. This way, we have the same type of equipment, variety of equipment in the building where you don't have a different company over here, a different company over here, they don't work together. I like consistency. Again, Quality Air has been here for twenty-five years. They treat us good. They come when we need them to in the middle of the night or whatever. That is why I went with one company, same company, we've been in that year, we do have contracts with them, renewal on a annual basis with them. So I can answer any other questions if you want.
Thanks, Charlie. Any questions specific to this request or any more information we're looking for? Go ahead, Josh.
I had a question about, so I see it's broken down here by different, different areas that they'd be doing work in. Why is police evidence room seventy thousand dollars? Why is it so expensive? I thought we just did also a large HVAC upgrade here at city hall and at the policing court building a couple of years ago. What's?
My knowledge there, the, that is their evidence room down in the basement, and I guess the way it's.
It just seems like for being such a small space, that's a huge amount for HVAC system, unless there's something.
Something because it's a confined area, I believe, is what probably the issue is. The building's always closed. I can get some more information on that, if you'd like, or exactly on that.
I was just curious why, why the, why it was so much more than the other areas?
Question. Part of it might be, it has to maintain a certain temperature range to maintain the integrity of.
Climate control.
Various evidence that we have in there from the.
That's what I wondered, if there were some special climate control requirements that were unique to that space or? Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
I was just going to say that we had some comments, we'll look through the terms and conditions on, on these, so if you do move forward tonight, I would request that you do it, make a motion, number one, in the best interest, obviously because it hasn't been bid, but also subject to review and approval by the, as to the terms of the purchase order by the city manager and city attorney. There are some indemnities that the city's asked to provide in the, in the purchase terms, and there's a warranty question that we had about the ability to extend the warranty a little bit. That's, that's a policy question, that's something I thought we should ask about. And then there's, we would suggest there'd be a requirement for insurance being provided by the contractor. So just some, if you do proceed with this item tonight, again, in the best interest and subject to review by, of the contract terms by the city attorney and city manager.
Good, good point. Thank you. I saw another handle, was it Justin? Yeah?
Yeah, so I have a couple of questions, I guess, and maybe a comment. One is, if we were to delay this, it sounds like there's some legal considerations that need to be taken into account. Is two weeks enough time for us to solicit other bids or, you know? Okay.
Probably, I hope they can get them back in two, in two weeks, but again, something may came in cheaper. Now you've got a different X Y Z brand versus an A B C brand, and is it wasting our time doing that by trying, what price, you got different pricing when you may not use?
Yeah, and I, I hear, you know, the rationale that you've given, the twenty-five years of partnership, there's consistency across all buildings, sounds like they've always responded very well when we have a need. I guess just from, you know, I know I've said it multiple times, but from my vantage point, I, I really think we need to do everything we can to protect the interest of the taxpayer, and so even if we do go with them as a higher bid, at least getting bids or getting other estimates allows. estimates allows us to know, are we still within range? We've had this relationship for a long time, so in the interest of the taxpayer, are we still about where we should be with this company? So I've said it before, but it's always just a little bit concerning to me when we say this is the company that we contract with for this particular thing, because as a municipality, we technically don't have contracts. We go out and we solicit bids and we figure things out, the best price and the most efficient offering, and then we make a determination from there. So, but I understand what you're saying, there's a historical relationship there and there's reasons for all this, so I respect all of those things. To me, it's just a check, right, to make, a check and balance to make sure that we're still somewhere within the range of where we should be if we do that. So my personal preference on this matter would be to delay it for the two weeks, allow for legal considerations to be accommodated, as well as to see if we can get another bid, just to see where we're at. Beyond that, one last point, the term sole source designation, I think beyond this issue, but just in general, when we look at budgeted items and determining what is sole source and what isn't sole sourced, it's a little bit cloudy to me, because in my mind, sole source is something like the AEDs from Stryker, where it's literally limited to that particular company. They are the only one, clean water plant, we often have sole source items, but if we have something where it's preferential, that we go with the company, is that truly sole sourced? So just a question for, you know, city policy and things like that, when we use the term sole source, what do we mean by that?
Randy, yeah?
Sure, just a few questions. So my assumption that this is all in the city budget, but March was a long time ago, and it doesn't say on here, answer yes or no, whether this was in the current. There we go. All right, because it's not on this, okay, I didn't see the back, all right. And then another question, so Quality Air, are they like train-specific, as in the brand that they install, train, or what is the manufacturer of the equipment that they install?
I believe.
That's a good question. I saw on here Carrier Bryant and Train. And I know Quality Air, I've known that for a long time too, they represent a lot of different main brands, but I saw three different brands in there as well.
Quality is different brands.
Probably different components of all parts of the system.
So is Quality Air the only contractor that can service train equipment? Or could, for example, other companies in Granville? And I know that Train's done great work for the city, been competitive, but I'm feeling a little closer to Councilman Nordhook's thoughts here that, I mean, I know in my own business or properties, I don't think I'd spend close to $100,000 without giving some competitive bids. This was probably close to 93,000, 94,000, but are there other contracts that are able to service train? You know, just, okay.
Sounds like we have some questions, some concerns. Is there, Justin, you had asked if two weeks is an okay time to delay this. Charlie, does that still work into, this work was, we're going to try to get this scheduled before the year end, correct?
I'll do my best to get it in two weeks.
Okay. Any concerns with the evidence room in the next two weeks? Okay.
So are we going to pump this down two weeks, Griffin, to October 28th?
Yeah, that'd be fine. If someone would like to make a motion to postpone this item for two weeks, we will work through both the bid process as well as work with the city attorney to get the items addressed, should we ultimately decide to go forward with Quality Air.
Does that sound good to you?
Sounds good.
Okay. Motion and support to move this down to December 28th with our digging into additional information, so thank you. I felt, what did I say?
December.
December, yeah, I'll start with that. Thank you, sorry.
Give us time.
Yeah, give plenty of time. Marcy, we should call the roll, please.
Councilmember Nordhook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Galderlos?
Yes.
Merinda?
Yes.
And Mayor Porto Vanderhoff?
Yes. Griffin, anything else on the city manager's report you'd like to highlight?
Yeah, well, two other quick things, if you all don't mind. First, I'd just like to draw your attention to a map that we included in the city council packet. With the help of Assistant City Manager Matt Butts, we took the CIP, the five-year road plan that I know city council and staff have worked hard on over the last couple of years to develop and put in a visual format. I know personally, I have a lot of success both communicating with maps and using them personally, as opposed to sometimes looking at the spreadsheets that we keep our budgets and CIPs on, so both for internal use, but also wanted to share it with all of you in the case you all have constituents or residents in the community who have questions or concerns about, obviously, what the city's going to spend quite a bit of money on in the upcoming years. So I will highlight that this isn't intended to be, you know, perfect and never change forever. As we all know, our CIPs and our budgets are living documents based on things that come up, but at a single point in time, it's our hope that this will be something that can be used to help, to use as a communication tool, but to also promote the transparency that I know is so important for our organization. So I don't know if there are any questions on it, but put it in there if there are edits or concerns or any feedback you all may have, please let us know, because we do hope to use this tool for communication purposes for the five-year road plan moving forward.
Thanks, yeah, this is a nice tool, it's a nice visual. Randy's looking at the yellow over the highway.
Exactly right, I just pointed that out to Josh.
Yeah, I like the visual too, I mean, I probably would just stuff this away somewhere and pull it out, and we look to see which roads are coming up, because I can never remember from one year to the next which ones are on the list, but I was kind of wondering if you would include the stuff that we just did this year too, so we can see what's already been completed.
Like a different color for 23, 24?
Yeah, I mean, I know, I guess part of the intent with this is to kind of communicate the story about, you know, the mileage adjustment that was done this year with the budget going forward, kind of the capital improvement plan, but we've done a lot of roads in the last couple of years too, it'd be nice to see which ones have already been done recently.
Good suggestion, more maps.
Well, I mean, I just overlay it on here and just add another color, I guess, and say which ones were 23, 24, maybe even 22, 23. So the Ivan Rest one here too, that's the one that we just did, right?
I believe so. Yeah, it's all going to depend on what year it was in the CIP of what we ultimately got included. But yeah, happy to take a look at that, that's a great point as well. Obviously, pigging back off our conversation about priorities a little bit, I mean, it's very clear to me that roads and these road projects are priority for our organization moving forward, so just starting to think through kind of both planning tools, communication tools, and so on and so forth, but that's great, we'll work on that. If there are any other thoughts, please let us know, we're happy to try to incorporate those as well.
Thanks, anything else?
Last comment I had is just a friendly reminder that prior to the regular city council meeting on October 28th, that as a friendly reminder, will not be in this room, it'll be taking place at the Library Commons space. We will be having a special meeting, a special joint meeting with the DDA Board at 5:30 PM. Because of having that meeting from 5:30 to 6:30 or a little bit later, and then being there for the regular meeting at 7:00, and being new to the organization, I didn't know what you all liked or were used to, did you all have any interest in us providing any kind of food or snack or coffee or anything at that meeting to keep you all going for a little bit? Or do you all just want to push through and try to get done as efficiently as we can so you can get on to your regular plans? I didn't know if you had a preference, I'm happy to do it either way, I know we'll accommodate, but just wanted to see what your thoughts were.
So that meet, the regular council meeting will also be at the Commons as well?
Correct, yes. So the special meeting at 5:30, leading up until the regular meeting, and then the regular meeting will both take place at the Commons space.
I guess it depends on how long the agenda is, Griffin, but I'm just kidding.
Yeah, and I, actually, I completely understand that, it's just, it's tough to predict it this time, I mean, we've been doing pretty good at keeping meetings to about an hour, but even with that, you know, you all would be there from, let's say, 5:30 to 8:00, just recognizing that's a lot of time commitment from you all, we're happy to do it either way. So if there are no strong feelings, that's fine, we'll go forward just kind of without as normal, but if, I guess, someone has any strong feelings, feel free and let me know, we're happy to do that for a special occasion like this. It's not really our normal setting, so we're happy to be able to make that happen. That's all my comments, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Griffin. Yeah, Councilmember comments, Randy will start at your end of the table.
No, it was a great Fall Fest, and just thanks to everybody who was involved in that, Teresa's not here, but tremendous amount of people involved here, and highly successful. I just thought I'd point out, we do have a gentleman from Comcast back here, so maybe he wants to be updated and know what happened at the meeting already, but, okay, perfect. Other than that, just, I think that's it, so. Always a pleasure to be here and just work with everybody through all these issues that we got going, and glad we collaborate and we don't always see it the same way, but we've always been able to work well together, so.
Thanks, Randy. Josh?
Yeah, a couple of things, so just want to mention that the Park and Rec Master Plan refresh is underway, and we're currently collecting community input through a survey. The link is in your packet on your memo, it's also on the city's Facebook page, and assuming it's on the city website somewhere as well, is that right, Marcy? Is it on the website? Okay, so looking for lots of input, anybody that lives in Granville is welcome to contribute to the survey so that we can help prioritize projects for our master plan update for Park and Rec, so I think that'll be open yet for probably another couple of weeks.
Did you get a lot of traffic from the QR code on your scarecrow? Do you know, from?
I'm not sure, I haven't heard how many responses they've had so far. I saw that there was one out there as well, but, yeah, so please feel free to share it with people in the community. So it's on the city Facebook page on the website, there's a QR code, I think, on a sign downtown yet on the scarecrow probably as well, so check that out. And then just wanted to say congratulations again to Darren, Deputy Chief, so look forward to working with you, thank you for all of your service thus far for the city, so congratulations. And we also had a couple of promotions here that were noted in the memo, for fire department to lieutenant for Tom Blake, Tom Datema, and Kevin Nutt, so I guess pass on our, congratulations to them as well. We'll see them next time for, okay, great, so that's it.
Mr. Justin?
All right, first I just wanted to say I was thankful to note in the project update, the Indian Mounds Drive, the downtown Grand Rapids Inc., looking at a study to evaluate converting that into a non-motorized trail. I know Mr. Christman spoke about that, and in the time that he spoke about that to now, I have also had interactions on that road with cars coming the wrong direction, and so I think something needs to be addressed there, so I look forward to seeing what the results of that study are. And then I just want to publicly say to Charlie, thank you for your willingness to do this between now and the next meeting. I know that our department heads are very good stewards of tax dollars and do excellent work on behalf of our residents. It's just, it's easier for me to sleep at night when I have all of that information in front of me and know, you know, that the vote that I am taking is 100%, I can see clearly, but I very much appreciate your work and the work of all the department heads to take good care of our tax dollars. Thank you.
Thanks. I have nothing additional there.
I'll just say congratulations to our new deputy police chief, and leave it at that, thanks. Yeah, I have nothing to add. Really, this was a great meeting, it's the longest one I've ever chaired, so. Usually mine are 15 minutes or less, so, thanks for all.
Better next time.
Thank you all for being here, would certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support, motion and support. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Thanks, everybody, have a good evening.